I want to thank our colleagues who are here this morning. We do have a quorum, yes. The following senators are here with us this morning. Panglina Munia Barnes, Yamashita Mabini, Duñez, Ty Heron, Palasches, Cruz, Frank Blas Jr., Senator Guthers, Senator Ty Heron. Wonderful. Esta, we can begin. So, we then will proceed forward, and we have Bill Number 340. And the primary authors are Respecho, Blas, and Cruz. So, I will recognize Senator Blas then for a motion on Bill 343. I'm 340. 340 dash 31.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move to place Bill 340 dash 31 in the third reading. I'd like the opportunity to be able to speak on.
Please, Senator, may continue.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, on behalf of the main sponsor to this piece of legislation, the good Senator from Agony Heights, Senator Respecho, we're asking for our colleagues' support on this bill that would basically identify or the parameters and the boundaries were with regards to the Guam State Clearing House. You know, Madam Speaker, this body had basically created the Guam State Clearing House for the purposes of ensuring that there was an entity within the government that ensures that we capture, at least within the government, all those opportunities that are made available through grants and other federal programs, that there's a coordinated effort within the government. And in the spirit of wanting to make sure that we expand and diversify, and quite honestly, in my case, is basically sometimes get the government out of the way with regards to the expansion and diversity of our economy and allowing nonprofit, non-government organizations to be able to avail themselves to certain programs. This bill was put together so that it defines that the Guam State Clearing House, in as far as its jurisdiction and its parameters, it sticks to within the government agencies. It allows and it recognizes that, you know, non-government organizations, nonprofit organizations, and certain other entities within the government of Guam, more specifically, those, you know, the Guam Community College and the University of Guam don't have to go through the Guam State Clearing House to be able to go after the grants, whether it be through the federal government or other governments or even other organizations. That they don't have to go through that process to be able to avail themselves to the grants or to work for the grants. What, you know, I mean, there's nothing to preclude, and I tell you what, Madam Speaker, if a non-government organization goes after the grant and as a result of this grant, you know, there is a requirement or there is the need, or even for the sake of making sure that this grant, this program really works, if you're working with government organizations, this thing doesn't, it doesn't stop it. It doesn't stop it. What it does is it basically open, it allows the non-government organizations, the nonprofit organizations, the opportunity to go after these grants and not have to go through the scrutiny and not have to go through that extra bureaucracy. What we're doing is we're cutting the red tape for a lot of these organizations to be able to go after these grants. So, I ask my, in support of my colleagues, again, on behalf of the main sponsor of this legislation, Senator Respecho, I applaud him for being able to put this together. I was, I had the honor and the opportunity to be able to work with him in putting together this piece of legislation, which I feel is a, is a good piece of legislation, and asking my colleagues for their support. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator Blas. On the motion, I recognize the Vice Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. At the risk of spooking this bill, I rise in support of it.[296.02][296.02](Laughter). It's interesting. I'm very glad that it was the minority leader that rose to ask the government, get out of the way and allow private sector NPOs to move. It's odd that the main sponsor actually would have been the majority leader, the Democrat who wants the government to stop regulating and taking control of everything. So, I commend the previous speaker, the great minority leader of the legislature, a very upstanding Republican, for supporting a Republican philosophy of non-regulation by government entities and quit having control. In more than half the states, Madam Speaker, the clearinghouse has been abolished. We discussed it as a possibility, but decided instead that this would be a good compromise of allowing the clearinghouse to continue and not follow the trend throughout the country of abolishing the clearinghouse and allowing everybody the ability to move forward and apply on their own and just make sure that the government stays to handling the government and being, following a good Republican philosophy of get out of the way and allow nonprofit organizations and non-government organizations to assist the government in doing things that we don't want it to do. We want, or at least the talk is, to try to make it, make government smaller. This is one way. And so, I applaud the majority leader for taking, spearheading this and insisting that this be the one bill that he pushes through, and I think it's poetic justice that it was the minority leader that introduced it to the floor, and I want to, I hope that everybody will unanimously pass this bill. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Vice Speaker. On the motion, I recognize Senator Duñez.
Good morning, Madam Speaker. And yesterday, I failed to open with Merry Christmas. So, Merry Christmas to you and all the members of our body and to the listening public as well. Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of Bill 34 dash 31. And I have to tell you, a number of times that we've had meetings, roundtables, and committee of the whole, talking to government agencies that fund NGOs, nonprofit organizations, Sanctuary, a number of different organizations that really help the government. One of our biggest questions a lot of times is, are they, what are they doing to secure additional federal money? Are they applying for grants? And I know there have been instances, Madam Speaker, where actually it's been the government agency that got in the way and either gummed up the process by either having a co-application or just not working with that entity. And we've, we've lost money before, Madam Speaker, because of that, and critical services. It's one of the reasons why this is very timely and important legislation. As the retiring speaker, our good Vice Speaker mentioned, in a lot of jurisdictions, this has been abolished in terms of the clearinghouse. And in terms of the discussion of bipartisan efforts, it was actually George Bush running for his second term when asked, "Why are you so partisan? What things that the Democrats are doing that you like?" And he mentioned a program that I was very endeared to as the Director of Department of Youth Affairs, and that was the AmeriCorps program. And I could tell you that a good portion of the staff up at the Department of Youth Affairs were once AmeriCorps members. And the AmeriCorps program itself, over the years, has moved to working with private businesses in order to facilitate getting the money into the economy and being able to pick up these employees under the program, and then allowing these employees to help government services. And here's an example, where when a private entity applies for a grant, a nonprofit organization, and trains individuals where government services are required as well, that it's those training dollars that actually prepare those employees to be some of the best employees in the government because they've already underfilled some of those positions. And so, it really is a meshing of opportunities, and it really is getting government out of the way in times when our struggling nonprofit organizations that more than likely provide services to our government that we don't have the money for, and applying for these federal grants where a lot of times they can do a better job. And so, Madam Speaker, this is an excellent piece of legislation, and I ask all of our colleagues to please join in voting for this because it will really make a big difference for NGOs in Guam. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Sidhu Smasi.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, I recognize Senator Palasches.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I too rise in support of Bill 340. I don't believe that there's a need for government scrutiny or government review of grant applications submitted by competent nonprofit organizations, Sanctuary, Guma Mommy, Juta Foundations, and the like. And I feel that this would then expedite the process and pursue whatever federal funding that may be available, actually, for the people of Guam. I do not see this bill in any way jeopardizing Guam losing out on some of the funds that may be available. It can only enhance. There are people in these nonprofit organizations that are very competent in preparing grant application and in administering the grant, Madam Speaker. So, I have faith that the nonprofit organization will be able to pursue and secure fundings for the benefit of the people of Guam, and for that, I support Bill 340. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome, Senator Palasches. On the motion, I recognize Senator Munia Barnes.
Madana Sidhuus, Madam Speaker, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and rise in support of this 340 dash 31. And as I heard the retiring speaker talk about the exemptions and working closely with the nonprofit organizations that, like with Sanctuary, Salvation Army, Guma Mommy, and all those agencies who work closely with the government of Guam but knowing that they need the leeway, and probably working closely with the timelines due when requesting for these grants and knowing that the resources within the state clearinghouse may not have that, I think it's important that we give this opportunity to these nonprofit organizations. I do have an inquiry, and I'm opening it to either the co-sponsor or anybody who would like to answer that. Based on Item F with the exemptions inclusive of the nonprofit organizations, the Guam Community College and the University of Guam, I wanted to ask, does this, would this apply to the judiciary and to the legislature who would be looking or seeking for federal grants? Would we have to then in turn go and make sure that everything goes through this?
Senator, that's the exact same question. I think that actually is being discussed right now. So, what I'm going to do is hold on to your question. We're going to take a brief recess.
Thank you.
I was going to say, thank you, Paul. The legislature's back in session. Senator Munia Barnes, you still have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. And I know, thank you for that recess after further discussion with my colleagues and after looking about, looking at the provision and what we have here today. I know that there may be separate legislation that would have to be introduced, and I'm, will be looking into that with my colleagues on the other side of the arena. So, with that being said, I just want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak and rise in support of this legislation. Sidhu Smasi.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, is there anybody else who would like to speak? There being none, would you like to close, Senator Blas?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, before I close, and I want to thank the Leo Consul for pointing this out, and then confer with all the co-sponsors to the legislation, the good Senator from PD and the good Senator from AFME. It's in page three, line 15, where the proposal there was to add the words "nonprofit organizations." I move to, move to delete that.
So, you're deleting the nonprofit organizations or deleting M?
No, deleting nonprofit organizations.
Okay. So, on that motion then, which is to delete nonprofit organizations, any objections? Objections? So, ordered.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, on behalf of the main sponsor of the legislation, Senator Respecho, again, I want to applaud him. I want to thank him for giving me the opportunity to sponsor this legislation along with the good Senator from PD and the good Senator from AFME. And I ask for my colleagues' support on this piece of legislation, and therefore, ma'am, I ask that this be moved to the third reading.
You're very welcome, Senators. On the motion then to send Bill Number 340 dash 31 COR to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. The chair recognizes Senator Munia Barnes on Bill Number 343 dash 31.
Sidhu Smasi, Madam Speaker, and Merry Christmas. Thank you for giving me the opportunity at this time to speak on, well, I move, Madam Speaker, that Bill Number 343 dash 31 COR and act to create the Guam Film Office by adding a new section, Article Four, to Chapter 50 of Division Two of Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, to the third file. And if I could speak on it, I'd appreciate it.
It's as introduced, right?
As introduced, Madam Speaker.
Yes, Senator, you may proceed.
Madam Speaker, we look at this legislation and we realize, or our committee realizes, that we needed to protect the way Guam is used in films. We need to market Guam as a viable film location, and we must increase the market for our talented local film production companies. And Madam Speaker, we looking for new resources and trying to tap into creativity to come our way, this is one way of doing it. I want to say and give some history on how this bill came into fruition in its creation. In May of this year, I had watched the Guam International Media Coordinators Association, which is called GIMPCA, do a presentation in front of the current Guam Visitors Board members. And in this presentation, they listed hundreds of off-island production houses that came to Guam to shoot their footage using our breathtaking scenery. Madam Speaker, the presentation highlighted the millions in revenue brought into Guam's economy, and that was via hotel occupancy tax, car rentals, restaurant dining, and short-term hiring of local labor. GIMPCA, which is a nonprofit entity, assisted these off-island companies with obtaining permits and clearances from U.S. Customs and Border Protection, Department of Labor, and other relevant government agencies. And I want to say, Madam Speaker, that GIMPCA today is doing the job of our government. And despite all their assistance, Madam Speaker, and steadfastness, GIMPCA is neither a regulating or decision-making body when it comes to our local government. Additionally, there is no structure in place to indemnify the government of Guam from any malfeasance or loss, and there does not exist within our government a regulatory entity to provide structure and protection in the booming film production industry. This, Madam Speaker, also means that there's no entity lobbying for Guam in the international film production market, and no one is out at film conventions pitching Guam as a viable, breathtaking film location. I'll take that back. There may be one, but it's very, very difficult, and the resources are very scarce to find. What Guam has lost without a film office, Madam Speaker, is the opportunity to host large-scale productions that consider Guam for filming, recognize that there is no formal system in place that clearly outlines the rules or process for filming in Guam, and move on to other locations because they don't want to deal with the gray areas. I want to share for the record to my colleagues that a famous filmmaker, Mr. James Cameron, is filming Avatars Two and Three in the Marianas Trench. He is doing this based, and it's going to be based out of Australia. A Guam Film Office would have the capacity to incentivize Guam as the base for Mr. Cameron. And I'd like to say, imagine the exposure local production companies would gain from working with Mr. Cameron. Madam Speaker, we have, we have amazing talent here, and the Guam International Film Festival recently illustrated this point. I know that some of, a lot of my colleagues were there when the Munia brothers, Kel and Don Munia, initiated this festival, and we had over 100-plus entries with almost, if not over 60 countries or 16 countries coming in. But it is not the first that we've seen of our, this is not the first that we've seen of our local talent. We also have creative filmmakers who've been doing very well for our island and for our youth. Those who know, Mr. Alex Minos has directed project films with our youth, working closely with the troubled youth at the Department of Youth Affairs, and they have literally won awards for their filmmaking and their creativity here. We have also winning photographers here on Guam and award-winning videographers. And in 2010, YouTube rated the most watched videos watched in Japan were two music video groups from a pop group called AKB48. I don't know if any one of you guys know that here. But every shot, every scene that was done in those videos and making millions and millions and millions of dollars back in Japan were done and filmed here on Guam. And Madam Speaker, as I share that, I want to know that the bill, as it creates this film office, has 13 sections. The first would talk about the definitions, two would be the establishment of this Guam office, three would be the rules and regulations, four would be the powers and the duties of the Guam Film Office, five would be the establishment of the Guam Film Office Fund, six would be the permits requirement, seven would be the exemptions. And Madam Speaker, before I go on to Section Eight, there was concern in reference to our local film industry and our videographers and our cinematographers here on Guam. But the provisions in Section Seven, when we first looked at the legislation, we introduced it as Bill 324. And when we had a lot of meetings and discussions with the filmmaking industry and the photographers here on Guam, there was some concerns in reference to how the Guam, the local talent would be treated. And there are questions were provided, and a new bill was introduced, which is this bill today, 343. I know that as of yesterday, there were several concerns that were brought up to my colleagues and based on the information that they received from me and the exemptions. And looking over the bill, the new bill, 343, as it is here today, it addressed those concerns. So, to our listening audience out there, Madam Speaker, I want to know that those concerns have been addressed in this Bill 343. Section Nine talks about the applicants and issuance. Section Ten talks about the indemnification of the government against liability. Section Eleven talks about the issuance and bondings required. Section Twelve would talk about the effective date, which gives it at 180 days. And of course, Section Thirteen will talk about the severability, which is, I guess, standard in I guess, standard in legislative bills. But, Madam Speaker, I ask that my colleagues help support this effort on creating the Guam Film Office. I know that it's been in the talks for more, almost two decades. I know that when we had the public hearing, it was, there was a lot of positive response, there was a resounding positive response, and I want to note and thank the good speaker from Baragada, who shared with him his perspective and his history when he was a part of the government back in 1986, working with the former Governor Ricky Bernaldo, and the things that he had to do to facilitate what we want to do in this Guam Film Office, and I hope that he will be, that he will help me in supporting this effort through. But it's because of what we need to create, a vision, so that we can look not just within our region, Madam Speaker, but within this specific Asia region and the international region all around the world. Guam continues to reach for the stars, and as we continue to do that, we need to also bring those folks here and saying, they always say, if you build it, they will come, if you create it, they will seek, and, Madam Speaker, this is one positive way where we can tap into a new industry, new resources, new markets, and promoting and advocating Guam as that true tropical island paradise, and the pristine beauty that we have here. And I hope that my colleagues support me in this endeavor and these efforts, and I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak within my time, like, si, juzma, si, signa, mase, Madam Speaker.
Well, you can make him number two.
Okay, do that closely, I was hoping to make Speaker. At this time, Madam Speaker, without objections, I'd ask that Speaker Ben Pangolinon be two, and you, number three, if there's no objections.
Hearing no objections, so ordered. On the motion, I recognize Senator Blas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I, just pointing to the bill and everything, and admittedly, I am, was one of those colleagues that actually went to my good senator from Cali-Pago and said there was some concerns and everything, and in an effort to be able to make this a, you know, a bill that first off can work, one of the first things I'd like to do is be able to propose a couple of different amendments here. The first one, Madam Speaker, is actually on page three, and actually, starting on line sixteen, the end of line sixteen, where it says, "The Administrator Shall Establish a Committee." I'd like to be able to basically strike out the word A, I mean, the letter A, or A, at the end of line sixteen, and actually put in "an advisory," so it reads, "The Administrator Shall Establish an Advisory Committee." This is so that if you skip over and you move over to page ten, line twenty-five, it talks about that the Director of the, of GIDA, or the fee for issuance of the permit shall be set by the Advisory Committee. This will then identify, you know, who, which, who is that Advisory Committee? And in speaking with the author, she says she has no issue with that, so that's my first amendment.
So on the motion then, without any objections, so ordered.
Second concern that I had with regards to this is with regards to the compliance and also the enforcement of this act, and in speaking again with the good author of this legislation, is on page ten, line nineteen, is strike out, after inspections, place a comma, strike out "and," and then after monitoring, place a comma, and then put "and enforcement of this act." So it'll read, "The Guam Economic Development Authority Compliance and Audit Department shall conduct production-side inspections, monitoring, and enforcement of this act."
Hearing no objections, so ordered.
And I'll go ahead and prepare the necessary amendments, amendment forms for this, to be able to put this in. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator. On the motion, I recognize Senator Pangolinon.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of the program of establishing a Guam Film Office to assist off-island production companies who may consider Guam as a location for production of feature films, or commercials, or any other videography production. The only hesitation I have is that, you know, we're putting it at GIDA, and given the max havoc, havoc, I'm not sure that that's where it should be. But, you know, it kind of fits there, because it's economic development, really, and when we talk about, earlier, we talked about diversing our economy by allowing nonprofit organizations to apply for federal grants. This initiative does that. It's not uncommon that the film offices are located in the office of the governor in some jurisdictions, because you usually have an economic advisor for the governor who oversees economic initiatives, and film and marketing of films are vested in those positions, so that's not uncommon. But since we do have the Guam Economic Development Authority, which is tasked with seeking ways and opportunities to diversify our economy and attract investments and investors to Guam, there is no doubt that bringing in film production companies and exporting our beautiful scenery through the film's capture of our great community and beautiful island, that that enhances our exports, and certainly then enhances our economic activity. And so, I do support this. You know, in 1986, I guess I was involved in that because I served as the Special Assistant for Business and Economic Affairs, as well as Federal and Foreign Affairs, and it was dovetailed into, as part of my collateral duties, to work with some of these initiatives that would facilitate, at that time, of course, mostly Japanese companies coming to Guam. And we experienced a good amount of business of these professional production companies coming to Guam. We had several companies that formed to be the local representatives to facilitate the investment, I mean, these film companies that come in here and kind of run the red tape and run the bureaucracy on behalf of these companies coming in. And some changes in the law on the federal side really truncated that opportunity, and it wasn't until these pioneers that we had kind of worked with some of the new companies and new entrepreneurs to kind of figure out the best way and fixes around the system, and maneuver the federal bureaucracy on labor permits and so forth, that we're now starting to see more of these people giving real consideration to coming to Guam. And I think this initiative is going to be very positive towards that effort, and toward expanding that effort, and providing not only our local film production companies, but now our local entrepreneurs who may become logistics coordinators that will allow them to expand their operations, and represent these individuals, service these companies coming in here on these production companies. And then from the more global perspective, then, this film office would then kind of mesh all that together into a promotion of why it makes sense to come to Guam. Beautiful scenery, ease of permits, we hope, clear regulations, economical location, local expertise, and all of this, and fashion then a marketing program to present ourselves as a viable location for the production of film and videos on Guam. So, I most certainly commend the author of the legislation, thank her for allowing me to be a co-sponsor, and I believe that this effort and embedding this within our Economic Development Authority, and putting this in an office there and giving it some focus, will be positive, and we certainly hope that the office will then, of course, coordinate and work with the Guam Visitors Bureau and the promotion of our island for this purpose of ensuring that we can attract these individuals who seek to produce and market videos and consider Guam as a viable and beautiful location for their production needs. So, I want to thank my colleague for, once again, her initiative in this, thank her for allowing me to co-sponsor, and on her behalf, continue to ask for your support. Si, juzma, si.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, I recognize Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, looking over this, I would like to open amendment on page ten, on line twenty-one, with respect to reimbursement, and it's just an insertion of two words to make sure that whoever put out the personnel, that that agency be reimbursed for that, for the personnel they put out. And so I would like to insert, beginning on line twenty-one, reimburse the relevant government of Guam agency for any personnel provided to the company, and I hope that that's clear, that if the police department provide ten police officers to control traffic, that the Guam Police Department be reimbursed, and not the film office of the government of Guam, because it just says your government of Guam.
So then, the language is to reimburse the relevant government of Guam?
Yes, agency.
Agency.
The fire department, I'm sure that will provide some ambulance, radio, and standby and those things, and that's the amendment. Of course, I support the bill.
Okay, on the amendment, I recognize the Vice Speaker. Oh, okay, oh, okay, so on the amendment, hearing no objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You still have the floor, Senator, if you have anything else to, okay, you're very welcome. Senator, the Vice Speaker, Cruz, you're recognized on the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I rise in quick support of this piece of legislation. In this last year, it's not been one of my best years, and many of you know that I probably suffer from some kind of ADHD, because I can't sit very long in here, or anywhere, or have a very long attention span. But one of the best weekends that I spent on island was the weekend that the Munia Brothers did the Guam Film Festival. On Sunday, I sat at the Micronesian Mall from ten in the morning until eleven-thirty at night, and I ate from one of the concessions there, popcorn, because I didn't want to miss one film. It was excellent. You would have been so proud of the children of Guam, the young people. The best film that I saw there was actually a fundraising film that was done by the senior class at JFK High School. It was entitled "I Heart Guam," and if it's still on MCV, pay-per-view, or whatever they have, that $4.99 thing, I would encourage everybody to see it. It is an excellent film. You think about seeing community theater or something, and you kind of cringe, this was so good. I literally sat for over two hours and didn't get up or move, it was that good a film, and I, I am just so proud of our young people and their capabilities, and so I hope that this will engender more. And for full disclosure, I am on a board that is trying to do some filming, but I just want to say, that's why I didn't join as a sponsor in this. But I just am so excited about what our young people are able to produce. Our young people have been able to act and write and produce excellent films that have won awards throughout the country. FYI, that I'm on the board with, has taken youth from behind the walls, and I commend Senator Ada and Senator Duñez, because both of them were up at DYA when Alex Munoz initially brought the program to them, and they embraced it, and the films that were done, written by the kids, acted out by the young people out there, won national awards, and we have the capability, we have the talent, and I'm hoping that this legislation will make sure that our talent is tapped, properly paid, remunerated for their efforts, and we will have a thriving industry. So, I rise in support, and I thank the author for getting this bill to the floor.
You're welcome, Mr. Vice Speaker. On the motion, hearing none, Senator Munia Barnes, would you like to close?
Si, juzma, si, tatlu, Madam Speaker, I just want to thank my colleagues for those who spoke in rise and support of the bill, and those who made the necessary amendments to this bill, to this legislation, to make it a stronger and even better bill. I continue to ask my colleagues to support this ever, this endeavor, as it will provide for a new industry, tap into more resources, work closely with our Economic Development Industry Authority, and also our Guam Visitors Bureau, who continues to work really hard to work with our economic driver here on Guam, which is our export of, which is our driver of tourism, which is our export service services, and, Madam Speaker, this is good for Guam, it's a win for Guam, and the awesome, awesome talent that we have here on Guam can be even better tapped when those international filmmakers, or world-renowned filmmakers, come to Guam and see the work that our people do here. So, thank you, si, juzma, vina, de si, for giving me the opportunity for speaking on this legislation, and hoping all my colleagues support this effort. Si, juzma, si.
You're welcome. On the motion to send bill 343 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. I recognize Senator Tyeran on bill number 350-31.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to move this to the third reading file.
Is your mic on?
Yes, ma'am.
I can hardly hear you. Yeah, okay. Oh, I'm so sorry.
I know, I'm just a little under the weather, I'll try to speak louder, but I'd like to move this to the third reading file for the purpose of discussion.
And would you like to discuss it?
Yes, ma'am.
Please proceed then.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bill 350 requires qualifying certificate beneficiaries to utilize records, access, and legal services offered by local businesses. This bill was introduced in the spirit of buying local and hiring local, as we're pushing throughout the community, and what it does is it ensures that our local workforce has the right of first refusal for these jobs that are created by the qualifying certificate beneficiaries. Now, I must say that the qualifying certificate program is something that I believe is a very good program, it's intended to create jobs and further promote economic development on Guam, as it entices businesses to invest on Guam. So what we want to do is just ensure that when these companies apply and are given QC's which provide tax breaks, that they are looking to employ our local workers first. Yesterday, we spoke about a bill that looks to develop our local workforce, so let's also ensure that they have fair opportunities when these jobs are created by these companies. I do want to note that this bill was written in full cooperation with GIDA, which oversees the QC program, and they are in full support of this bill. Now, according to the measure, the QC companies would be able to hire off-island workers only if they've exhausted all efforts to hire locally, and the other exception would be if the local services are far too expensive for them to afford. So, I ask my colleagues to just take a look at this legislation and support, and tell our local workers and our local professionals that we believe and we're fully confident that they are capable of doing these jobs as well, and I ask them to support this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, I recognize the Vice Speaker.
Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of this piece of legislation. I want to commend the author for the introduction. She and I have discussed over emails and discussed a lot of my H2 things, and I keep joking about in my old age of whether or not I've become Republican, all of a sudden, and you're going to take my membership away. But the employment of our local workforce is imperative. I mean, you heard me yesterday talk about the fact that we need to train them. We have given QC's to the hotels on this island. And I would like for you to just in your own mind, start from the top hotel, I mean, just go up and down the row, except for Joe Blossup at NICO. How many hotels have a local tomorrow in a position of responsibility in their hotel? Thank God for Joe at NICO. But other than that, I cannot. And I've sat and I've gone each one of the hotels. Last week, I almost threw my iPad through the window when I saw that one of the smaller hotels on island hired a new GM, and it wasn't a local person, it was someone that had been brought in on H1. We have a program up at the university that was supposed to be turning out tourism students. What is happening? We talk about the QC this morning. I got a letter that was addressed to the governor talking about what's happening down at the shipyard. At one time, and many people here can remember, when SRF was a Navy facility, the solid middle class of this island was made up of the employees of SRF. Now, it's privately held, and maybe many of the people that worked at SRF are my age and they have retired and aren't back. But we, our people can be excellent apprentices, and they can learn how to do that. We've shown that. We managed to have five, 600 employees at SRF that ran that ship repair facility in the '70s and in the '80s. Those were my age group. They were taught and they were very capable and able to handle everything that came through that facility. It was unfortunate that the Navy downsized and ripped it, and many of those people moved to the States and never came back. But we know that we have the capability here on this island. We have people that are able to do it if the companies would only take the time to train them and to recognize them and to pay them an adequate salary. Today, I appreciate the fact that the shipyard is operating and paying taxes on island, or is it because of the fact that, I'm not sure, with the QC? But it's got over 100 H2 labor working there. The local workforce, the older ones that used to work there are no longer working there because they cannot afford, they cannot afford to live on the wages that are being paid. But these places have QC's, they continue to operate. And so I think that this is a good first step, requiring the 10% of the workforce be local and be given that opportunity is an excellent idea. And I commend the author for coming up with this. And I'm hoping that my colleagues will join her and I in pushing this through and making sure that we get unanimous support from this legislature to have the 15% or more on this island who are unemployed understand that this legislature is trying and wants to do something to make sure that we can figure out a way that we can provide them with employment. Not government employment, but to make sure that when the government gives tax breaks to companies to come in here, that they make sure that they do their part for this community by giving the locals the opportunity to work for them because they are excellent employees. And SRF employees proved it. We've been able to show it in the hotels. We just don't have the top management positions and all the others that have had QC's. So I fully support this piece of legislation and ask my colleagues to join me in supporting the great senator from Maritza? Oh, Barragata Heights, too. Oh, I should genuflect. And pass this piece of legislation. Thank you.
On the motion, recognize Senator Yamashita.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in full support of Bill 350-31. I applaud the author of this measure. I was speaking with her earlier, and it really is very serious, a serious issue that we do everything we can to build local capacity. I wholeheartedly agree with everything that the previous speaker just stated. We have local talent on our island. We need to do a better job of giving opportunity to that local talent and to developing our island with our own skills. For some reason, on our island, there are many people who believe that we need to go off-island to get the best. And I totally, it astounds me why people think that, but they do think that. And so I appreciate that we must start with our own folks, know who we have, encourage them to engage, to be involved, and as a retiring speaker also suggested, they need to be paid accordingly. This goes to a bigger picture, and that is leadership. As we try to find a superintendent for our public school system, Department of Education, as we try to find a director for our Guam Memorial Hospital, it really bothers me that we think we have to find that leadership off-island. I'm not afraid of competition at a national level. I have been to enough events, conferences, summits, to know that Guam stands of pride in its own. I know for a fact that many of our schools have gone nationally and have come home with the first prize-winning trophies and awards. We hold our own and we do very, very well. We don't do well enough in saying that we can and we shall. So this, pieces of legislation like this will help build that capacity. I think it's smart, and I think it does us a favor to ground ourselves, to grow the roots, and to show our island community that we believe in ourselves. It also is not foolish in thinking that systems do not need fresh resources. What the author of this measure has done is saying that if we cannot find, or if it is too expensive locally, then the QC can go off-island. And I appreciate those kinds of open opportunities so that we don't hurt ourselves in the effort. But it certainly says that a priority is identifying and acknowledging our local talent, who can and who many times who do. But we need to do more in giving the opportunities so that they may. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, recognize Senator Duñez.
Madam Speaker, thank you, and I rise in full support of Bill 350-31. You know, Madam Speaker, in the last session, once again, we passed legislation collectively and worked very hard on the opportunity presented to educate our young people and to provide scholarships up at the University of Guam and GCC. And after that legislation was passed, I was actually invited to speak before the Rotary Club of Guam. And as I did so, I discussed the funding sources. And of course, one of them was GITA qualifying certificates that our local businesses can avail themselves of in order to invest in our university and our Guam Community College. And during the question-and-answer period, I found it very intriguing. One of the, one prominent member of our community said, "Why would the legislature pass and the governor sign legislation that would transfer resources from our tax base to the University of Guam and GCC?" And I simply said in response, "Because of the commitment and our commitment to education." And my question in reverse was, "Why is it that we constantly get chastised from the business community? What are we doing to provide for an educated and skilled workforce? And what are we doing with our resources? And how do we provide for our people?" And then this is one of the answers. And so now, Madam Speaker, once again, following up, we have a bill that requires that even our local businesses now that would take advantage of that tax opportunity to ensure that we hire local. I echo the sentiments of many retiring speakers that have stood up in this hall to say, "We have a wealth of talent on Guam." Our university just recently graduated a number of students that I'm sure would be very capable of providing services to any one of the businesses on Guam or the government. But it's just good to know that we are finally honing in on these issues and saying that we must demand now that anyone receiving tax benefits in our community must have a local preference. Madam Speaker, even in the recent NCSL session that I attended in Tampa, that is one of the predominant themes of the states now, not only buying local but hiring local. There is a constant inward look now to say that, you know, we need to prop up ourselves and ensure that preference is given to industry throughout, that local preference is something that will build a community and sustain a community. So Madam Speaker, I thank the good author for this great piece of legislation that focuses on developing our island, our people, our talent. Sidus Massey, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, I have your Senator Frank Bloss. Oh, okay, so he was, so it wasn't your hand, it was his hand? No, because then I have after him, Mabini, then Munya Barnes, then Palacios, and Guthard. So if he's going to speak now, then, because I have you on the list, you, yes. So I'll put him on the list, but that would have to be after Senator Guthard, it's okay.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And, Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of this piece of legislation as well, and I want to, you know, applaud the good author of the legislation and also in working collaboratively with the Economic Authority to be able to strengthen what we have in as far as a program, you know, that helps to entice businesses and hopefully, you know, grow the local talent. And I have to agree with the good senator from Pedy that, you know, while this helps to be able to grow the local economy and encourage buy local, is there's got to be more teeth in with regards to the encouragement of the buy local. You know, Madam Speaker, and not to stray off the subject for a little bit, but this also, you know, maybe is the catalyst for further discussions in as far as other programs that are available, you know, through the government, through our government, to opportunities made to many of the businesses, that we have to continue to encourage, you know, to go local and to buy local. I guess that, like I said, this is catalyst for maybe a discussion with regards to government programs or even government contracts within the government of Guam, that, you know, we already have, and there should be a preference with regards to local companies, but also for, you know, as these companies get these grants, you know, or these qualifying certificates, that there is that continuous encouragement for, to hire local. There was an earlier discussion with regards to the continuing effort by the Guam Community College and the University of Guam. And I must say also, there are other local companies or local academies, if you will, academic institutions, technical skills institutions that continue to produce and, you know, and provide opportunities for our local people to be trained so they can get into these jobs, they can compete in these jobs. I recognize, Madam Speaker, that a lot of these jobs are competitive. But, you know, gone are the days, and really, I think as a result of technology and really as a result of the resilience of our people, there is a lot of the talent that's out there. Quite honestly, I don't see why we have to continue, as was mentioned earlier, in as far as the employment of off-island through the H1, H2, you know, and J-series visas for, you know, industries such as landscaping, okay? You know, there are some landscaping places that continue as a result of government contracts, you know, to employ H2 employees. We've got a lot of capable people that are on our island that will be able to do this kind of work. And so this kind of, this legislation would help and would ensure that, as was stated, our people get right of first refusal. I was one of those individuals and I want to, you know, that attended the University of Guam's recent commencement exercises for the graduation of 221 graduates, proud graduates. And as you know, Madam Speaker, one of the things that is provided is that the graduates from the different disciplines, you know, stand so they can be recognized. And when they called for the graduates from the, those that were graduating with degrees in the discipline of tourism, there were a number of our people that now have degrees in not only local tourism but international tourism. And this was in the first graduating class that, you know, that the University of Guam has graduated with this type of, in this type of discipline. There have been numerous previous. And the concerns that continue to be that in a local industry that has a qualifying certificate program, that there continues not to be local people there. Now, again, I recognize that as far as the competitive nature of all these places, but are people given, being given the opportunity to compete? And what this legislation will do was provide them and will make sure there is a vehicle and there is that opportunity, not only in this field but in other fields. Guam, our island, have a lot of individuals capable now of not only managing but running or even owning businesses, and we have to provide them. I think it's incumbent upon us to provide them these opportunities. The same token, we've got to provide and say to these companies that take advantage and have the opportunities to be a part of these programs, you got to recognize too that there's no need to be able to go elsewhere to find talent that exists in our backyard. It makes economic sense. You don't have to worry about moving expenses, you don't have to worry, in some cases, cost of living allowances, because it's the people that live here. And this piece of legislation would help to provide those opportunities. So once again, I applaud the author of this legislation. I would hope, and I know that I'm going to have continued discussions with many of my colleagues, and maybe expanding this type of direction, this type of policy towards other programs, towards, you know, that exist within our government. We have a wealth of talent on this island. Let's use it. Let's use it. And I'm sure that in using it makes Guam, makes this economy stronger, makes our people prouder, and it shows that we can do the job. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator. On the motion, I recognize Senator Mabini. On the motion, I recognize Senator Mabini.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I commend the author of Bill 35031. I think it's, it is high time that this section of our GCA is updated. I sit on our local Guam Workforce Investment Board, and I see constantly how a lot of our local businesses can't compete with off-island businesses. And so this is one method that would be able to attack that, those kind of barriers or deal with those barriers. We know that they're, and you know, in line with the premise of this bill, I'd like to turn to page three and ask, and look at the possibility of having an amendment to take this even a little bit further. We know that we have training experts on Guam, we've mentioned our previous speakers from Baragata, Sinahanya and P D, that we have local training experts, whether it's Guam Community College, EOG, Trades Academy or whatnot. However, we also know with modern technology, we have a lot of off-island, sometimes fly-by-night, sometimes just fly-by-night, online, stateside or internationally-based groups that kind of capitalize on some of these opportunities on Guam. And what happens is it kind of, it limits the competition, the competitive ability of our local businesses, our local training facilities. So what I would propose is an amendment on line four regarding training, because here, right here, you know, this is in line again with what my previous colleagues had pointed out, that we have great local training facilities on Guam. So how about we up the ante on this bill and say, on line G, my proposed amendment would be, as far as training, requiring the beneficiary to, one, utilize locally-based training services, two, or, you know, make contributions to an independent training or scholarship fund, or, three, establish in-house training programs that capitalizes on locally-based experts to ensure compliance to pertinent local rules and regulations. And in this way, we're encouraging them to stay local, buy local on the training side, not to mention, will they be support, not only will they be supporting local businesses, but this is an opportunity for them to also possibly identify local talent in the process of training for, you know, to build their businesses. So, again, I proffered this amendment on page three, line four, and I have it written up and I'll just pass this if the author would also perhaps consider me be added as co-sponsor.
So Senator, we're going to take a brief recess then.
Yeah.
The legislature is back in session. Senator Mabini, you still have the floor.
After discussion with the author of the bill, I ask that we'll go ahead and withdraw the proposed amendment. is timely and I commend the author and look forward to unanimous votes on Bill 350-31. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Mabini. On the motion, I recognize Senator Munia Barnes.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I stand in full support. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak on this Bill 350-31COR. I want to thank the good author, Senator Tyrone, for introducing this legislation and, like I said earlier, I stand and rise in full support of this bill. I just want to say that, as I share the sentiments of all the retiring speakers that rose and spoke in support of this bill, I want to say just recently, I was speaking to one of the members, if not the chairman of the Guam Young Professionals, Jay Rojas, and I also had the opportunity to speak to Anita Williams, who is with the, Dr. Anita Williams, who's with the University of Guam. And when we look, and when we look at this legislation to include the inclusion of local professional advice and support as a condition of benefit for the qualifying certificate beneficiaries, it says one thing, Madam Speaker, that we are now realizing that if we think local, support local, and buy local, and give the opportunity to our local community, then we're saying that we're doing the right thing for Guam. As the retiring speaker spoke about the talent and the workforce that we have here, I have to tend, I mean, I agree with him. And when Mr. Rojas and I were speaking earlier, my cousin said, you know, T, all it needs is for us to change our mindsets, just change and refocus what we have to do to bring Guam where it needs to be, and that's to think about selling Guam first to our local, anything that's made on Guam, think about supporting it first. What we do, the talented folks that we have with the junior achievement, who's starting out their businesses, and this is a program that's run by JA, where they have the different schools compete in a business program, business format, and they sell the products that they create. And what better way is to continue to think, support, and buy local. We're setting, we're giving a message out there, we're sending a message out there that we support Guam and the community here. And the author of this legislation has taken the time to work with the agency, the GIDA, and the efforts have, has worked with her colleagues, several of her colleagues, in making sure, spoke to the vice speaker, to make sure that what we do here is to provide that opportunity for our community first, our workforce first, our talent first, our jobs first, come from Guam first, always putting Guam first. So I want to thank her for her efforts. I want to thank her for introducing this legislation, and I want to say to her that I stand in full support of this legislation, and I hope she can give me the opportunity to be a part of this. Sisus Maasi, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome. Senator, on the motion, I recognize Senator Guthertz.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This is a great bill, man, a great bill. And you know, this brings to the forefront a lot of concerns that we all have, to try to maximize opportunities for our local workforce. And, you know, to be very frank with you, we are often criticized and chastised for trying to do that. I've experienced it repeatedly, particularly with reference to the buildup, for advocating for our people that the Guam military buildup should be a win-win for the civilian community, just as it would be beneficial to the military community. And, you know, a lot of businesses, big corporations on Guam, chastise us for saying that. Their position is, don't say anything at all about a win-win, or about supporting the local community, or anything like that. Just support the buildup hands down. Don't advocate for jobs for our people. Don't advocate for a good quality of life for the civilian community, compatible, comparable to that of the military community. But, you know, ladies and gentlemen, colleagues, that's not our job. Our job is to advocate for the people of Guam, all the people of Guam who call Guam home. Now, the retiring speaker pointed out the local buy-local initiative, which is a great thing, and this legislature took that position when we moved forward on the Guam product seal bills that became law, with the support of the governor. Because we wanted to advocate for local manufacturers, local producers of products here, and ensure that they're treated fairly in the marketplace. We were chastised for doing that, too. Tell me, what is wrong for advocating for the people of Guam, for the residents of Guam, for those that call Guam home? We shouldn't have to depend on the importation of workers from abroad. If we can fill a position on the island with someone qualified, whether it's a construction worker, a beautician, a hotel manager, an accountant, any field of endeavor, any professional area, any skilled area, any apprentice area, if we have individuals who live on Guam, pay taxes on Guam, who contribute to our community, and who have the comparable skills and education, then they should be considered for these positions and not dismissed. We do have a problem here, and we have to keep our eyes on the Department of Labor to make sure every time they certify an H2 worker coming into Guam, that there is no one on Guam that can fill that position. This includes, as our former speaker pointed out, and others pointed, gardeners, maintenance personnel, cooks, you name it. In this regard, we're our worst enemies, because we don't have enough oversight over this, Madam Speaker, and we need to put this in place. But more importantly, we need a conversation with Guam's business community. We need to sit down together in a roundtable and talk about these issues together. And that really hasn't happened. I would recommend that the head of our committee having oversight of economic affairs consider doing that. Let's have a conversation with the key organizational groups on the island, the key employers on the island, the key associations on the island, the business sector, about these concerns, and let's see what they say. And let's see how we can match up and work together to address these needs. There's nothing wrong with advocating the employment of our island residents before we authorize importation of workers from abroad. And, you know, we have the power to do that, because the governor has to certify the H2 workers. We should also sit down and have a conversation with the U.S. Immigration Service regarding this matter. There shouldn't be carte blanche. We should look at the requirements that we have in place now in terms of the advertising and see if that's sufficient. It probably isn't. But this is a good time to do it, and I think this is a good bill, to create that thinking process. But let's arrange this conversation, work with the private sector and the other groups, and see where we're at and what we can do. They may have some legitimate concerns about some regulatory issues that might help make some of these goals possible that we've enunciated here today. They also may have some issues that concern us that we need to talk to them about. I think the bill is great, and I think it's a good beginning. It's not easy to do this bill. It's not easy to effectuate it, let me tell you. There will be fallout. But it's time. It's really time. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Guthertz. On the motion, I recognize Senator Tony Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of Bill 350-31, and I commend the author for moving forward with this amendment to the, with this bill. And it just goes to show that, as a body, that we should continue to work and promote those policies that will continue to support our local economy and to support our people here. And I am grateful to the author for ensuring that this is one of the ways that she sees to do that. However, I would like to proffer an amendment, and my amendment has been passed out, and it's to amend Section I on page three. And currently, the bill reads, "Local professional advice and support requiring the beneficiary to procure and utilize Guam licensed entities that provide professional services." After the word beneficiary, I would like to include, if such services are needed, to procure and utilize Guam licensed entities, and after entities, or employ Guam residents. And what would, and what my amendment does is that it will allow the QC recipient not to be discouraged about applying for the QC, and seeing that if there's a service that they don't need, that it would require them to still hire them. This will give them that flexibility that if they don't need the services at this point in time, then they can still apply for it, and should they need the services later on, then they would have to procure and utilize the Guam licensed entities. And the other section of it is to employ Guam residents. And what we want to do is to ensure that maybe some businesses would rather hire employees that are either lawyers or accountants, and instead of getting the services of a law firm, just hire their own employees. And we want to make sure that when they do hire their own employees, whether they be professional services such as lawyers or accountants, that they hire locally before they go off island for any hiring of such professional services. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
There's a motion on, I mean, there's an amendment on the floor. Are there any objections? Anyone wishing to speak on the amendment? If not, are there any, oh, on the amendment? Speaker Wampat, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I'm, you know, I mean, I realize the amendment where he says, "If such services are needed," and I think that that language is not necessarily, is not necessary, primarily because employers will always hire for services that they need. So it's almost as if though, I mean, you understand what I'm trying to say? I mean, employers just won't hire just because. It's based always on the services that they're providing to its customers, and they're not going to be told to hire anybody that they don't need to hire. But I do support the language, though, that we're to utilize Guam licensed entities or employ Guam residents. So I, and maybe if the author can just explain why the need for that language.
If we could just take a one-minute recess and I'll...
We'll take a moment recess. Wampat, you still have the floor?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. After conferring with the author, and legal counsel then, he said, "I'd like to proceed with an amendment to the amendment," and that is just to delete the words, "and if such services are needed," and it would just continue on with his, with the other amendment, which I don't disagree with. I actually really support that, to allow for the employment of Guam residents.
On the, thank you, Madam Speaker. On the amendment to the amendment, are there any objections? Anyone wishing to speak? If none, no objections. Motion carries. We're still on Senator Ada's amendment, on the main amendment. Are there anyone else wishing to speak? If not, any objections? No objections. Motion carries. Senator Ada, you still have the floor.
That's it, Madam Speaker. Thank you.
You're very welcome. On the motion, on the main motion, I'll have address Speaker Wampat.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I, too, along with my colleagues, and as you can see from the note up there, there are 10 individuals who signed to speak in favor of this, you know, proposed bill. And as I sat, of course, where you're sitting, I listened to everyone's discussion on the bill. I know that we had really veered off to many other things in terms of what needs to be done, because it's really very timely, and I think this is actually, as some have said, the first step, and we need to move even beyond exactly what it is that we're doing here. Because if you really truly read the bill and compare it to, based on what everyone was saying, is that, yes, this is the beginnings. It's going to benefit, you know, the accountants, attorneys, and auditors, primarily. But then, of course, there is the language for other professional services or professional jobs that may be available. As the vice speaker mentioned earlier, is that we do have a full-fledged four-year program at the University of Guam, a two-year program at the Guam Community College. And then we see these students matriculate out of the universities and our colleges, but we don't necessarily see them in, you know, any of these places where these companies have received these QC's. And it's high time, of course, that we really seriously put the money where our mouth is right now and really look at QC's, because we're not seeing the true benefits of what it is that previous legislatures saw, and in their wisdom of creating this and providing QC's. Because the problem we have is enforcement, and then we don't have other regulations that if one buys out this company who has a QC, that does it continue? And most of the time, it continues, and nothing else is being done. So, yes, this is, I would say that this is also a first step, but we really, and because we have 10 individuals who've stood up to say that they are in favor of this, but they started to talk about everything else about the QC's, then I really think that we need to make that commitment now, is to sit down and talk and look at the entire QC, the program itself, and see what needs to be done then, so that truly, in the wisdom of our... of our past, you know, leaders, and that we really do go back to the original intent of it and try to really make it work, of course, you know, for the government. So although right now I know we're dealing with a different group of individuals, you know, of course, I'd like to see that the ones in the lower bracket of our labor, that it's not just 10% the way it currently exists in the law, that maybe we might consider whether it's -- should it be raised to 15%? I don't know yet, but the dialogue definitely has started already, and I'd like to see the dialogue then continue beyond this bill, and then, more importantly, hopefully, we'll be able to craft again more legislation than to reap the benefits of these QC's. So thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak and support this legislation.
You're very welcome, Speaker Wampat. Speaker Pangolino, you're recognized on the main motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of this, but I also am a little disappointed, given all the discussion here and, you know, what had passed. We all say that we want the QC to benefit our local people, we want it to benefit our employees, we want it to benefit our community, and that we want to make sure that when we grant these qualifying certificate programs and we give money back to the investor, that it makes economic sense for our community. And I certainly heard all that, but I just can't -- can't see the actions, you know, backing up those words. Because when we had an issue on this floor in terms of subjecting the QC to an independent review of our professionals within our government on the economic analysis of whether or not QC should be extended or granted or changed, nobody wanted to do that. Everybody says, "Oh, no, we shouldn't. We should allow our professionals to make those analyses and make those recommendations." We didn't even say have them make the decision. Just have them do what they are professionally trained to do, determine the economic benefits of the qualifying certificates we put, programs like this, whether or not they implement them. That's what that qualifying review certificate board would have done, doing what we're saying we want to do here. But when it came time to say, "Yes, we're going to put something in place that will allow our professionals to make these kind of analyses," we said, "No." Nobody wanted to override. So while I certainly support this initiative, and I thank everybody for -- maybe they've changed their minds, and maybe we'll have an opportunity in the short future to have all these nice words about supporting our local community, supporting it, and putting in a system in place that will ensure that the analysis does that and that decisions are based on those analysis. I certainly hope that we'll see that come to fruition on this floor. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Mr. Speaker. Anybody else who would like to speak on the motion? So then I'm going to ask the author if she would like to close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I am truly humbled by all of the support received on this bill. I really didn't expect that much discussion to be had on it. So I am very humbled and honored that it receives such great support from this body. I'd like to thank Greta for working very closely with our office in collaborating and developing this bill, and I'd truly like to thank the body for standing in support of our local workforce. We always stand up strong in support of our people and in putting them first. I would like to invite Vice Speaker B.J. Cruz as a second co-sponsor, and Senator Palacios has also asked to be third co-sponsor. But I'd also ask that all of those that stood in support of the bill to please sign on as also co-sponsors of this measure. But I thank you, and I appreciate all of the support for this measure, and I just hope that when it comes time for a vote, we do get a unanimous vote. Thank you, ma'am.
So on the motion, then, for the -- to add additional names as co-sponsors, which is the Vice Speaker and Senator Palacios, without any objections, so ordered. And then, of course, the other would be the other members who spoke in favor that they be included as well, so ordered. Now, I'd like to now make them call for any -- if there's any objections, rather than objections, to send three to three -- do we see no -- what's the bill number exactly? Three, five, zero, I'm sorry. Down to the third reading, without any objections, so ordered. Okay. I'm going to recognize the chair -- no, it's almost we've got one I'm going to recognize. Wait, we could then? Oh, okay. Okay, so let me put this other one away. No, no, one second. So we're going to move on to Bill -- amended Bill 363, and I recognize the author, Senator Ada, Tom Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that Bill 363-31, we move to the third reading file, and I'd like to speak on it.
You may proceed.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, Bill 363 is really a relatively simple bill. What it does is it seeks to do two things. One, it seeks to the approval of the legislature for a conceptual capital improvement plan for the cemetery, which will enable the increase in burial capacity at the cemetery and in addition to some other improvements that are needed. The second thing that it does, of course, is that in order to be able to fund these capital improvements, funds have been identified, federal grants have been identified to the tune of about $4 million to be able to fund the improvements that are needed. However, the program requires that a 10% local matching be provided. The 10%, of course, will basically fund the preliminary studies that are needed, but that these funds will actually then be reimbursed later subsequently as part of the program. Just a brief background, Madam Speaker. The Guam Veteran Cemetery actually began operations back in 1953, and 18 acres of land was set aside in PD for the purpose of burying veterans and their eligible dependents. To date, 13 acres have been developed for cemetery use, and total grave sites today numbers about 3,600. Now, it is estimated that there's about the capacity that's remaining, that in about five years, the Veteran Cemetery will have basically run out of burial space. In addition to that, over this 60-year period of operations, many of the grave sites really need maintenance because a lot of them have sunken, and they're going to need to be raised and -- and so that, you know, basically it just hasn't had the maintenance that it's needed over the past many years. The cap -- the conceptual plan for the improvement of the Veteran Cemetery really seeks to basically increase the capacity in the existing footprint, but it will increase the capacity by -- through the construction of columbariums since cremation is really becoming more of an accepted practice today, and that will provide for additional capacity of about 1,000 burial niches. In addition to that, additional above-ground crypts will be constructed and will provide also an additional 1,000 burial spaces for the cemetery. What the bill does is in Section Two, Page Three, it seeks for -- it seeks authorization to use local funds as matching funds for this $4 million. So we would be looking for an amount of about $400,000. Now, the reason why the funds are being sought at this point is that the Veterans Affairs Office really kind of came in a little late in the game of the budget cycle, but it wants to try and get into the next grant period, and so this bill then is being submitted for that purpose. On Section Two, I would like to just make one amendment. First of all, Section Two basically says that if the governor can identify funds that can be transferred for purposes of providing a local match, that then he's authorized to use that local funds that have been identified for purposes of the local matching. However, I'd like to make a -- an amendment on Section Two and add to that, and it's a simple amendment, add to that that funds identified for transfer shall be subject to appropriation by the legislature. So in essence, then, Section Two is saying, you know, "Governor, go ahead and identify the funds to be transferred." However, those funds will then have to come down to the legislature for reappropriation because initially those funds may have been initially appropriated in the budget for other purposes. Section Three of the -- Section Three of the bill? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, we have to take care of that. Can you just read that amendment one more time since we don't have it in writing?
Yes. It'll be the sentence added to the end of line nine on Page Three shall read, "Funds identified for transfer shall be subject to," and I guess actually the term, the correct term to use, "subject to reappropriation by the legislature."
And you have a copy, a written copy of that for the clerks?
I can quickly write one out.
Okay, so at the end then of -- on Page Three, line nine at the end of Section Two, so add the sentence, "Funds identified for transfer shall be subject to reappropriation by the legislature."
Yes, yes, ma'am.
On the amendment. No objections, so ordered. Senator, you may continue.
Madam Speaker, that's all that I really need to explain. On Section Three, it talks about the conceptual plan, how it's intended to expand the burial capacity at the cemetery.
On the motion, Senator Guthbert, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I'm very happy to be a co-sponsor of this bill with Senator Ada, and our veterans need help, Madam Speaker, particularly with reference to the facilities at the Veteran Cemetery in PD. As you know, there's been challenges in terms of appropriate maintenance of the facility, expansion of the facility, and general commitment on the part of this government to bring the dignity and the respect that our veterans deserve who are brought there as their final resting place, as well as to their families. I think we're very fortunate now. We have an administrator at the Veteran Cemetery, the former federal judge, John Pincot, who's extremely competent and committed to the veterans. He's a veteran himself, and he has quickly grasped what the challenges are at the Veterans' Office, the Veterans Affairs Office, as well as the challenges posed by the operational aspects and the maintenance aspects of the cemetery. And this bill brings new hope. It supports the initiative now that Judge Pincot's taken to try to identify sources of funds to expand the facility and allow the Veterans Affairs Office to maintain it in a way that we should all expect. At the same time, it shows the commitment of this legislature to help the Veterans Affairs Office and our veterans to be able to bring a level of performance at the Veteran Cemetery that becomes visible to everyone who goes there to show their respects. Now, as you know, Madam Speaker, recently I requested for an audit of the operational procedures and funding practices of the Veterans Affairs Office. This was not done to impugn anyone who may be associated with that office, past or present, but was simply to find out if they are receiving the monies that is authorized for their use and if they're following appropriate accounting procedures. And also, frankly, with respect to the United States government, are they receiving the reimbursements that they are entitled to receive to the Veterans Affairs Office from conducting burials of our veterans at the cemetery? I understand from our public auditor that the audit is underway. They're working on it, and it is my hope that through this audit, we will continue to be able to help the Veterans Affairs Office and the Veteran Cemetery by assisting them in putting in place appropriate processes and measures to ensure that the Veteran Cemetery has a long-term future in terms of proper funding and proper accountability of funds and proper management and proper linkages with the federal government for reimbursements. All these monies are important. The reimbursements are important because it allows the Veterans Affairs Office to devote those monies to the maintenance and expansion of the facility. So I'm very happy to join my colleague. I want to thank the veterans also, who are very active in the community, who've come to us and asked for help. Also want to thank Judge Pincot for his wisdom in working with Senator Ada and others in trying to bring forth this bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator Guthbert. It's on the motion. Senator Ada? Okay, so on the motion then, to send Bill Number 363 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Recognize Senator Frank Blas, minority leader. Oh, okay, so you want to wait until this afternoon then? Okay, so we're going to recess until -- all right, recess until 2:00 this afternoon.